Hey, everybody. It's another episode of Off the Mark with the Bickerstein Steens.
Bickersteins.
You just said you didn't want to do that shtick.
I changed my mind already. You know that. Kind of jamming on this music here. Can we just keep it going and not talk?
I think a lot of people would like that. You know, okay, so let's get right into it today. This has been a past week or so, a lot of crises.
Yeah, like four big ones that the media couldn't stop talking about.
And you know what's cool?
What?
They all became clients. They're all clients.
They are. Oh, wow.
And our exercise today.
We don't even have time to be on this podcast then.
No.
We need to be.
First of all, we should be at the beach because they're paying a lot of money. And yeah, they all became clients and we're advising them on what they should be doing.
Okay, no offense, but Ted Cruz, no matter what kind of trouble he's in, I'm not sure I'm gonna take him on as a client.
You would not. Okay, so that's the first question. Would you take, okay, Ted Cruz, let's start with Cruz. We're jumping out of order. Screw the script.
Burn. Let's burn the script.
Everybody knows what happened to Ted Cruz. Texas is on ice. I mean, terrible, terrible situation in Texas. The power company, shit the bed is not even the word. Or the phrase, or whatever that may be.
No, 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 I don't know. Well, the power, the power company.
The power grid, the powers.
But not only that, who shit the bed was the lawmakers who deregulated so much that basically it's like the companies, they're like.
Have you ever been to Texas? I lived in Texas. I lived in Texas. They don't, they don't leave the state. That is, I, I've had so many people tell me I've never left Texas because I have everything I need here and that's the way they live and they have the attitude. And you know, it is a pretty good attitude. It sounds well for them.
Yeah, they don't need energy or power. They just need their guns and they're cool.
They have energy. They have, well, they had energy.
They don't.
They're the biggest energy producer in the world. Oil, natural gas.
What, okay, so the problem is they deregulated to the point where the power companies.
They're not a client, the power company, Ted Cruz.
Okay, I know, but I needed to explain that the company, the companies, the reason why this was such a problem is because there's so much deregulation that, you know, it's like, do you need to have safety backups? Eh, it's up to the client.
All right, we're not solving Texas's problems right now. We're, we're, we're solving our client Ted Cruz's problems.
Oh, yeah, our client Ted Cruz. Okay.
So first of all, would you, just shits and grins, would you take him as a client?
Never, never.
You wouldn't take Ted Cruz as a client?
No, I don't, I would not. Okay, so I could not take anybody as a client that I honestly couldn't in good conscience, understand what he did. Like, there is no excuse for what he did.
All right, so if you, if you haven't, for some reason, if you've missed what happened with Ted Cruz.
Yeah, let's get some.
Giant ice storm, terrible, terrible power outages, terrible weather in Texas. So, so. Power grid goes out.
So Teddy, Teddy boy decides to be a good dad and to take his kids during a pandemic and wife and allegedly drop them off in Mexico, where the CDC says, by the way, you're not really supposed to go. And that's what every good dad does, right?
It wasn't just that. It was, I mean, it was a compounded thing, worse and worse. They, his, he blamed his wife for wanting to go and the kid's asking him, can daddy, can we go away? In the middle of this terrible, horrible winter storm in Texas, can we fly to Cancun and stay at the Ritz Carlton? Because they have great rates, $309 a day.
Yes, that's super cheap. Yay. Okay, so let's say they're, so.
He gets caught. He gets, I mean.
He gets caught because his wife texts.
This was the beauty of Twitter. Twitter was at its absolute Twitter best. And he gets on a plane or whatever, and within moments or whatever, people are tweeting pictures of Ted on this plane with his family.
Right, but not only that, Ted Cruz is so hated in the Senate. He's probably the most hated man in the Senate.
The line is from Al Franken, who used to be a senator, former, he said, "I like Ted Cruz more than most of his colleagues in the Senate, and I hate Ted Cruz."
Right, so he's, he obviously doesn't have fans in his own little community.
Okay, that's his brand. That's why we need to stick with his brand.
But, he's so hated, not only in the Senate, his, his wife is texting people saying, hey, let's go on this cruise, and the people leak the text to the media. So that's some kind of hate there.
They're friends, yes.
They're friends. That's their friends.
If you, if you hate Ted Cruz, and who doesn't, a lot of people actually do not hate Ted Cruz. But if you, if you're not rooting for Ted Cruz and then his wife group text were leaked to the New York Times late that night.
Yeah, that's bad.
That's, that's when you need some internal reflection. That's when you stop and look in the mirror and say, you know, maybe it's me. Maybe we need to look at ourselves.
Okay.
That didn't happen.
Well, let's, let's also talk about a few things. You know, some people defended Ted Cruz and they're like, well, he's a senator. So like, what was he supposed to do? You know, and I'm like, what, what could he possibly do? Well, I don't know. There's only two senators in that big old state. You'd think at the very least he'd be advocating the federal government to make sure that people have what they need. You think that maybe he has a lot of donors, that he would be trying to get money. And in the meantime, you know, he had Beto O'Rourke, who doesn't even hold office right now, along with AOC, who's hated by most Texas Texans, Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez, a Democrat from New York, working a food bank, raising millions of dollars for Texans, and this, you know, guy is in.
We know what he did wrong. We know that, but he's our client.
He's not my client. He's your client.
Okay, he's my client and I'm asking.
Is it, wait, irredeemable? Is that the word? How can you redeem anything? Oh, okay, so what did he do?
So what did he do? Look at what he did, because he's stuck with his brand. He's stuck with his brand.
He took a photo op, giving water, a clear, so.
Well, hold on a second. He was giving water. He was handing out bottles of water.
With selfies. Where's my camera?
And touching people like gently, like, hi, I'm, I'm here to help, and putting his arm around it. After he had been on two international flights.
From Mexico.
And while, during a pandemic, while he was really supposed to be quarantining.
He should have quarantined for two weeks, or at least 10 days when he came back from Mexico. But no, his photo op was more important.
So let's say it's not Ted Cruz. Let's say it's somebody you like. Let's.
I, I, I'm not saying.
And they screwed up, okay? They really screwed up. Because you know, the Texas Attorney General went to Utah. He flew in a private plane. He's not getting this kind of crap.
Okay, well, okay, so, so a couple of things. He tried at first to throw his kids under the bus. He tried to throw his wife under the bus. And then finally, he came, he realized, well, that's really bad. And so he finally came clean and just said, you know, I was.
All right, here's what he did wrong. Let's, let's go over it. First, okay, so he, he met with some news crew in Cancun, or I think maybe he was at the airport or whatever.
Just being a good dad.
And, and he tried with the story.
Gotta be a dad and a senator.
He was just flying him down and he was gonna fly him right back, which everybody saw.
What dad doesn't bring his kids during a pandemic to the place that the CDC doesn't, says don't go?
Okay, we've established.
I know, I'm sorry. I'm just so irritated by that. It had to be repeated, but anyway.
Okay, so he lied. Our advice would be, don't lie.
Never lie. Step one. And if you do a really stupid thing, like what you just did. Well, first of all, consult your people before you do your stupid thing. Because if you talked to one person on his staff, anybody on the planet, you could probably have asked his kids and they would have said, don't do it in the first place.
The bottom line is, okay, I mean, I'm gonna jump to the end. We'll come back on what he, a normal person should have done. But, but none of this is hurting him. None of the, he's.
Okay, okay.
Okay, he, he's never gonna be, he was never gonna be president in the first place. He wants to run for president.
Yes, and he is like, at 3% right now, like, right now Republicans want Donald Trump at 54%. Haley, what's her name? Haley, the South Carolina lady.
Yeah, former UN ambassador.
Why can I not remember her name? Somebody help me. Anyway, she's at 6%. Ted Cruz is at like 3%.
Right, okay, so he didn't, he's not hurting his brain. Everybody knows Ted Cruz, Ted Cruz doesn't do anything. All he does, he's a flamethrower.
Yeah.
He, he's there to be annoying. He's there to poke fun.
Definitely not there to serve the public.
Well, he actually did once during the hurricane or whatever it was there years ago.
Yeah, I guess he did that.
He raised, he not raised a lot of money. He had a lot of money sent, federal money sent to the state, which of course would be socialism, but let's not deal with that. You know, he's done things.
It's only socialism when the Democrats do it. Come on.
So, okay.
So how do we solve his problem?
Okay, first thing is.
Don't be Ted Cruz.
In the old days, and if you're not Ted Cruz and you don't care, your public persona, people are gonna still support him no matter what, because he's Ted Cruz, he's a Republican from the great state of Texas. But if you're not Ted Cruz and people like you and you're worried about, you know, your place in society and your neighbor's not leaking things.
And you worry about, oh, I don't know, God and karma and, and what's gonna happen to you in the afterlife if you believe in that? But anyway, go on.
Wow.
I got deep.
Wow. Okay, the first thing you would do.
First of all, you, you contact your God.
Okay.
You contact God and you say, can you help me out and give me a statement?
You don't, you, you don't stand in front of one camera and say one thing and then stand in front of a second camera, say another thing. Maybe you wait till you get home and then just take every question and do a news conference or, you know, where you're meeting with the media.
Right.
You stand in front of your house, you take with the poor puppy that you left at the, what was Snowflake? Snowflake the puppy that they left at the house. We didn't even mention that. And, and you.
The good news is Snowflake gets to be fed now.
You don't blame your kids. You don't blame your wife. We, I made a mistake. I made a mistake. This was not my best day. That was it. It was my idea to go to Cancun. I screwed up and now I am going to be back working twice as hard, three times as hard for the people of Texas, getting them FEMA funds, getting some, I'm calling each and every one of my, my donors and we're gonna fly in some generators. I'm gonna do whatever I can do to help people from now until everybody thinks this is set right.
Yes.
That's what you do.
That's what you do.
That's a one, that's one thing. Then you go do it. And you might have some photo ops, sure. Or you might let people know where you're gonna be. Handing out bottles of water ain't gonna cut it, but that's a good start.
Ted Cruz should have, you know, we, we obviously do crisis management. We have a whole thing of like a, oh, I have it here actually, like, Crisis Management Toolkit, but anyway.
Make noise, make it noise in front of the microphone since this is an audio.
Oh, is that, oh, sorry. There you go. Yeah, here. Anyway, it's very thick and very big and very detailed. But anyway, um.
The crisis management?
Yeah, it's not. I'm just making it sound bigger than it is. But, but anyway.
Just let that go.
No, I'm saying that, um, he, of all people, every politician I would think would have a plan of how to handle a crisis, right? Because every politician is ripe for a con, for a, for a crisis, don't you think?
I don't know.
And he's been through enough.
The rules, the rules have changed so dramatically that, like I said, it's, you know, Ted Cruz is on brand. He doesn't give a shit. Goes on a friendly interview network.
No, 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 no.
Goes on a friendly interview network and they, they say, what, what's so wrong with what you did? And they make it nice and they, they pat him on the head.
Hey, you know what? I gotta tell you, I, I would say he didn't, doesn't give a crap, but let me tell you.
And that would be another thing you could do. You used to be, you would go see Dr. Phil, right? He's got his problems. Or you, you go on a friendly setting. You go to Kelly Clarkson or, or, you know, Ellen.
Ellen would not have Ted Cruz on. He'd have to cut her right arm off.
Person who is like Ted Cruz, who's not.
He's friendly. Anybody on Fox News, basically. But, which I think he did do Fox News afterwards, right?
He did Sean Connery, Sean Hannity. Sean Connery no longer with us, but Sean Hannity is with us.
The thing is, is that Ted Cruz did care though, because first of all, if he, if he was like, I mean, look at Chris Christie when he was on the beach, you know, that he made everybody, he was just like, screw you, you know, I don't care. This is what I did. I'm, I'm not apologizing for it. I have the beach, whatever. He didn't apologize, did he?
Right, so do you need to apologize? Does, does, why do you need to apologize if he, if he's doing well with that? He's already, he was at the hearing the other day. He's back at work. He's doing his thing.
To apologize. What I'm telling you is that he did care. You're saying he didn't give a shit. Oh, he cared. Because he knew, otherwise he wouldn't have come back immediately.
All right, let's play out this real thing because we're married, okay? So his wife is nudging the hell out of him.
Oh my God, blame the wife.
Going to Cancun. I can't take another minute here in this 45 degree house. While everybody else is, yeah. So he's got the wife and the kids nudging them on one side and then he's like, I, I'm not gonna win that battle.
Oh, and then I, how many? And then I have, like, how many million Texans are there? Oh, wife, kids. He should have known, like, go into Cancun.
No, I'm just telling you the real thing, what really happened. He was fucked one way or the other.
Oh my God.
If he, if he told Heidi, his wife, we're not going.
Even if he said.
It would have been very chilly in that house anyway. Hey.
Even if he said, Heidi, I can't go because, you know, I'm a public servant and I gotta say, even if he sent his wife and kids away, that would have been a scandal. So anyway, all right, let's get to the people that we could save. People that we can actually help.
Ted, call us.
No, don't call us.
I'll take your money, Ted.
No, 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 no. Okay, so.
Snowflake, call us. We'll help you.
Oh, gosh.
Or Snowflake.
All right, so the other big scandal that, you know, and I don't watch The Bachelor, but everybody.
That's a scandal in and of itself.
I know, like.
We really should take up The Bachelor. Everybody's done. I can't, we're so.
I just can't believe, but the, the Gen Z'ers and the millennials who are so like woke and they're all, you know, like, into like anti-sexism and all that. I just feel, I feel like it's very sexist. Like, why am me the old, like, the old person, Gen X? Anyway, anyway, the, the younger generation loves it. I, I just don't.
Wait, what sexist? Because it's a bachelor? Don't they have a bachelorette too? They go back and forth.
Oh, so, so I'm gonna be on some TV show and we're all gonna like, just make out and try to get this guy's attention? Oh, God, it's just whatever.
They're making out.
Making out, having sex, or doing all kinds of things.
Well, there you go.
Well, some, some say they only, whatever. All right, I'll get off my thing.
I, I don't get, I don't get your point because like, what could be more natural and, and love inducing than staying in a multimillion dollar mansion where everything is provided.
Fabricated.
These great dates and planes and wineries and international, I mean, that, that's what happens in a relationship, isn't it? Isn't that what happened with us?
So I would go on The Bachelor and just enjoy all the stuff and not have any, not have any desire to compete for him, no matter how cute he was.
You know, I'm a little worried about how that was already thought out and you've already.
No, I just thought of it right now. No, I just literally thought of him right now. But anyway.
Are you gonna be a candidate?
No, it would have to be, it would have to be the senior bachelor and, you know.
Retirement living network.
Yeah, and maybe George Clooney.
The widower, the widow.
Maybe George Clooney would be the guy.
Oh, here we go with George Clooney.
You know, I never got to meet him. I had a chance to meet him, but no, we had to go on a cruise with you. I got.
A Ted Cruz, might I add, okay.
Anyway, all right, so back to The Bachelor. You talk about the controversy.
No, I was hoping you would. I don't even wanna get near it. I don't even wanna get.
So, all right, okay, so.
No, it's a very serious thing and it.
No, it is a big deal.
It's a big deal.
I mean, this is a massive primetime show. I mean.
This is a show that many people.
ABC's like, yeah, it's like, unlike me.
All right, we know that about the show, okay.
So here's what went down. You're gonna, you're gonna explain what went down?
Okay, so the host of the show, Chris Harrison, the guy with the roses, okay. He is now stepping aside after he did an interview on Extra defending what ultimately became of, he was defending of some past racist actions by a current contestant. So here's what went down. Rachel Kirkconnell is a current contestant on this, this season, which features the first black man as the show's lead.
Big deal, very big deal.
I can't believe it took him this long. I mean, we're really, okay, but that's, you know, opening doors here, being more diverse. Was discovered that Kirkconnell was involved in racially charged and conspiracy related content.
Do you need help here?
I'm so worried about just saying the wrong thing here.
Anyway, let's just do a, a deep dive into Kirkconnell's social media.
She went to this Old South Sorority event that depicted the Annie Bellamera and she was dressed up and it was just ugly. It was.
But she also has.
Like a plantation.
She shares her on social media. She shares, she shares Trump supporting, you know, friends wearing MAGA hats and she shares dangerous QAnon theories on her accounts and even on a TikTok. A TikTok user even accused Kirkconnell of bullying her in high school for liking and dating black men.
And, but specifically, in this, whatever, what, what got Chris Harrison in trouble was that he went on Extra TV and he essentially defended her. He said, is, is it a good look in 2018 or is it not a good look in 2021? With 2018 being what she did. So he put his foot in it.
How many years is 2018 to 2021? Only three years.
This is, this is what keeps us in business.
Oh, the crises is, oh, sorry.
Yeah, the crises. People doing stupid shit, okay?
The crises.
So Chris Harrison's knocking at the door. He says, help me.
Okay, no, 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 no. Chris Harrison tried to come to the rescue of his franchise through an interview. So the question is, and I don't know if we know this or not, did he do this? He's the executive producer. Did he go on his own or did ABC let him?
Well, you say he's executive producer. They, a lot of times they just give those titles to, you know, so they can pay him more. They, they, we can only pay you this much as host, but you'll be an executive producer. Yeah. So we don't know if he's really an executive producer by title or if he's really involved in there or if they listen to anything he says.
Right, so he, he went on to say some other things like, these girls got dressed and went to a party and had a great time. They were 18 years old. Does that make it okay? I don't know. You know, so he's, he's basically, you know, he's sticking up for the contestant. After the interview, Harrison received major backlash for his defense of Kirkconnell's actions. And then he made an apology and announced that he would be stepping aside from the show for a period of time, in quotes. And he, he, he's not gonna be a part of this big finale that, you know, features the first, you know, black bachelor. So he's gonna be missing in action on the big final rose.
When they were doing something right finally, he's not there for you. I mean, he's damned if he, he's damned.
So basically, his, his statement was, by excusing historical racism, I defended it. I am ashamed over how uninformed I was. I was so wrong. So.
Well, that was, you know, okay, good start.
All right, well, I mean, he, he basically, you know, that's fine to say.
So is he out? Is he, I mean, does he come back? Can ABC handle him coming back? Can the show handle?
It'll depend on the ratings of the final rose without him. And some, for some reason, I, I don't, I don't know. Is the host, I don't know, because I'm not a viewer of the show. But is, is he that integral to the part of the show?
Yeah, he, he mixes up the soup a lot, yeah. He just, he takes it from here to there.
I don't know, but could anybody do it? Like, could Ryan Seacrest do it or another Ryan Seacrest or another Harrison? I mean, you know, hosts sometimes can, no offense, be easy to.
That's a tough spot to, you know, as a former host myself. Do you really wanna, I mean, a lot of people love the guy. I mean, he's, he's kinda milquetoasty. So, you know, he, he, I mean, he's very successful, or he was very successful. But he's kinda milquetoasty and does somebody wanna step in to, you know, what, what he is essentially built or been part of being built and then, you know, be compared to them? I mean, would Orion Seacrest really wanna be compared to?
I don't, I, I don't think, no. If, if a new host come in, came in, I don't think they, he'd be compared to Chris Harrison. He would have nothing to do with Chris Harrison. He'd have to do with The Bachelor.
Are you watching, you know, the dance thing that Tom Bergeron, you know, now that they have other hosts? I mean, do you care, do you care that Tom Bergeron and?
I don't care about hosts at all. I care about, if I'm the dancer.
I used to be a host.
I know that, but I'm just saying.
I'm not liking the way this is going between us.
You used to be a host. That I think.
Come right in. How many at your table?
You literally.
Will you be dining with us tonight?
You literally.
You have a reservation? Oh, you do have a reservation.
You literally stepped into it.
I said, hi, is that a 20? Is that for me? Thank you.
I used to be a host.
You have a nice table.
There you go. Do hosts matter? I don't know. Ask yourself. But anyway, okay, sorry. That was, that was, that was. I'm sorry. I feel like I need to bring in the red cross here. That was, that was harmful.
So, I mean, we can't just have everybody apologize. It's not the source. So Chris Harrison, do you, do you take him as a client?
Chris, Chris Harrison, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I think he, he made a mistake, obviously. He did not, he didn't make a good spokesperson for himself. He, did he have media training for this? Is that what? Like, did he meet with a media crisis team and they said, hey, say this?
Yeah, do you tell the folks at ABC, hey, I'm going on Extra tonight. Yeah, this'll be an easy interview.
Yeah, I don't need to be prepared. I'm just gonna wing it.
If you're being done in by Extra.
Yeah, so a good spokesperson.
Hold on a second. Who did the, where was the, no, it was Access Hollywood tape. So, yeah, you could be done in by those shows.
You can.
Well, you weren't done in. Access Holly, Billy, Billy Bush, he was done in.
Yeah, but not.
The other guy who did all the talking.
Wasn't.
Moved on him like a bitch.
I hope Billy Bush, did he recover?
He's back.
He's back, okay. He's back.
He's on ET or one of those shows.
See, hosts matter.
Inside Edition.
Hosts are important. But anyway, okay, so.
He's a good host, Billy Bush.
He's awesome.
We're doing everything. We're talking about Chris Harrison because.
Chris Harrison did not make a good spokesperson for, he did, he, he was, he obviously did not do his prep work. He didn't do his prep work, right? You would prep for this. You would know and, and you would know when they began. Why would you?
Why would you defend this?
Well, yeah, you don't defend it. You, um.
Let's say it's another, okay, like, we can get into this whole other territory.
You just say, listen, she made a mistake. I, as a host, forgive her. And you know what? I'm, I'm a more educated person because of it and I hope that this whole thing has educated more people. I mean, I, it would, something like that is better. I just came up the, off the top of my head.
His answer about things happening in 2018 and 2021 is not satisfactory in this situation.
What I'm saying is, we all need to be open to change. We all need to evolve and we can't just say, it was okay back then. We have to, that's never a good statement. It was okay because it was 10 years ago, 15 years ago, 20 years ago. You can't say that. The only thing you can say is, you know what? I have been educated and we have, we have to be, we always have to learn and evolve and if somebody is sensitive to any topic, we need to be open to it. And, and why does that make us bad people?
So specifically, okay, let's get away. So, so Chris calls up the network and says, or calls up Network PR and says, oh, Extra has asked me to be on tonight to talk about Kirkconnell. And they go, hold on. Or, or maybe it was the other way around. Maybe Network PR called him up and said, Extra.
Why would Chris Harrison want to step in it? He, he should have been removed from the whole thing and there should have been an ABC person who handled the whole thing. Or if he felt like he needed to get involved, then he should have had very extensive media training and racial sensitivity training and whatever else that, but there's no way he should have done what he did.
Okay, so then he does it. What do you do?
Well, now, now he's, now.
Can he come back to the show?
Yes, I think he can come back. He has, yes, he can. I don't know if they'll let him because they.
What does he do other than sit on the sidelines? Is there, are there moves he can make?
No, I, I think when you do something wrong and you are insensitive to whatever it may be, whatever the topic, whatever, it could be gender, it could be racism, it could be, who, who knows? Whatever it is.
Sexism.
Sexism, I, I don't know. But anyway, no matter, no matter what it is, I think you can, you can come back. Maybe you just take a little break for a while and whatever, but then quietly do things to, A, educate yourself and B, educate other people. There's nothing better than someone who's made a mistake and then turns around and uses that mistake to educate people of.
Educate themselves.
Well, educate, well, I said, take a break, educate yourself, meet with people to understand why that was harmful and hurtful to people and then go and educate others. And then, and then you're, like, you're learning a lesson and then you're teaching all of us. You know, we all need to learn. There's, there's all these things.
Do you think people who are victims of oppression and racism really wanna hear from Chris, what's his name? Chris Harrison about what he's learned?
They're not, he's not educating them. About what he, oh. He's not educating them.
Teach me, Chris.
No, he's not educating them. He's educating the rest of us idiots out here that don't know. He's not educating the victims. He's educating the rest of the clueless people that. Do you know how many people who honestly don't think racism is a thing? They like, think we solved it when Barack Obama become, became president.
Mitch McConnell said that.
I mean, like, come on. Really? Yeah. Oh, it's all gone. Oh, that's, wow. Anyway.
So we didn't solve that problem.
No, 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 we did solve the problem. Chris Harrison can make a comeback and, and he's already done. Once he screwed up because he didn't have a crisis plan or he didn't meet with his team, he now is doing the right thing and he can make a comeback and the show, I think, will be just fine. Matter of fact, the ratings will probably, you know, sometimes scandals can make the ratings even higher. I don't know.
Yeah, no, The Bachelor survives on scandal. I mean, that's all they want.
I mean, so it's, there's, and this is not the first, this is probably this, first of this type of scandal, but there, there's been scandals before on, on The Bachelor. All right, so let's go to another crisis this week. And this was more of, it was Oakley Union Elementary School District Board, a school district board.
Did you watch the video?
I did. Oh, my gosh.
It's not funny. It's, it's, well, I, you know what? Screw it. Let's get to the end. They shouldn't have resigned.
Okay.
I don't think they should have resigned.
This is why we're the bickerstains, because, okay, but, okay, but, but let's get to it. Let's first describe it before you go. Okay, so first of all, they had open mics on a virtual school board meeting. They left the entire, um.
Well, they were having a Zoom meeting about, between the school board. They didn't realize that it was an open, that other people could join. They thought it was closed.
Right.
And then they, yes, that's what, so they thought it was closed.
They were awaiting the start of a meeting when they began discussing parents' letters and social media posts about reopening schools. So unaware that the public could hear and see them, they used profanity, they made jokes about parents just wanting a babysitter or to smoke pot in their home. And then they didn't know this, but a viewer in the meeting on the phone posted it to social media where it caught, obviously, the attention of the nation. The remarks were met with swift, widespread condemnation and calls for the board's resignation. A petition or calling for the entire board to resign quickly garnered thousands of signatures, and then eventually all the board members resigned. So, what went wrong?
Nothing went wrong.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, my God. Well, you know, so now they gotta get new board members.
Okay, okay.
Who the hell wants to sit on a board? You, you, you know, it takes a special person to go sit on a, uh, school board. Okay, and put up with the parents.
First of all.
All those privileged parents who think they're, you know, their shit don't stink.
Goodness. Wow. Are you, have you been on a school board before?
I've been to school board, I've been to hundreds of, because I used to be a host.
You know what?
And before that, I was a reporter, and I used to cover many school board meetings.
I, I, I covered them too. I covered them too, but I also was probably the privileged asshole parent who was complaining about something.
Right.
I was not a Karen. I was usually a very uninvolved.
Yeah, so you have some dedicated people who, you know, are letting off some steam stupidly, I mean, open mics. These are, our mics are open. We know what we're saying, I think, I hope. I'm not sure about that last segment.
We will be stepping down. This will be the last, uh, podcast. Matter of fact, we're closing up the business after this podcast.
Working at Shoney's.
We're moving to, um, uh, I don't know, what, Mexico. We're gonna go to Mexico.
Join Ted Cruz.
We're not welcome in the United States after this. No, but anyway, okay, so there's a couple lessons here. In the world of virtual meetings, you always have to remember your mic is always hot. Oh, well, first of all, it was kind of funny because the woman, woman was like, I'm gonna go to the restroom. Um, and, you know, you don't want to get caught with, uh, your foot in your mouth. And it could cost you, obviously, your job or business or a client or, or whatever. But anyway, so this is, this is a couple things they were talking about. So the main person, well, she was like, I'll be right back. I have to go to the bathroom. Which, which I've been in, where I've interviewed people, and I put their mic on, getting ready, as a television reporter, getting ready to, um, interview them. And they are like, oh, I'll be right back. And then I didn't know they were gonna go to the bathroom, you know? Otherwise, I would have told them, hey, turn your mic off. And then later, like, listening, I'm like, oh, my God. You always turn your mic off no matter what.
It's the, the Naked Gun scene where Frank goes to the bathroom during a big thing.
As a reporter, and I'm like, and then what do you do? They come back and you're like, ah, anyway. Um, you don't say anything, obviously, but then you're like, we're not recording that, but I didn't need to hear it.
Oh, so many times, we have interviewed people and they have, we put the wireless mics on them with the lavalier clips on. You've seen them, lavalier microphone, clips on and it's hooks to your waist, and you put it on. And then they don't realize, and they, they go around the corner and they start talking about you. I've heard that a million times. I don't like this guy. I, I, that happened to me literally in Texas. I don't, I already don't like this guy. I hadn't even said anything to him. I was just a damn Yankee.
Well, we also remember.
Oh, you don't like me already? And he's like, oh, I, I forgot, I was wearing a microphone.
It was funny, the, uh, well, we also did it when, uh, we were, we mic'd up our son's football coach.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that was great.
He kind of forgot that the mic was on and the parents were behind the scenes, like, actually videotaping. And they were, he was really far away from us. And he's like yelling at our son, who was the quarterback, which we, we were like, whatever, we didn't care.
Drop that in nicely. My son, my, my, our son was the quarterback.
And he was the winningest quarterback of the high school, which has been around since the 1960s.
History, yes.
But anyway, but, um, but anyway, he was like using the F-bomb a lot. And then later, we just went up to him, we're like, wow. Like, Spencer was in trouble, and he was like, oh, my God, you heard that?
I asked, I'm like, can I just get some clips? Are you just telling him to clean up his room with exactly how you did? Tell him to clean up, tell him to put his stuff away. I want some of that stuff. I just want to play you screaming at him because.
Because he doesn't listen to us.
To you.
But anyway, okay, so why did they have to resign? They had to.
I don't know why they shouldn't have.
No, 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 no.
No, this is not, this is.
I asked a question, and I was getting ready to answer.
You don't care what I have to say.
I would, why did they have to resign? Not you, I'm answering the question.
I'm sorry, I don't know why I was even there. I don't know what I was thinking.
I don't know either.
My mic was on. I should not have been talking, much like them.
I was asking myself the question. Anyway, the reason why they resigned is because they never had a crisis plan. They never, they.
Again with the, why would they have a crisis plan?
Get close to the mic. We're on a podcast.
Why would they have a crisis plan?
Because every school board, every small company, everybody should have a crisis plan. Literally, you can just go to our website and download it. And then just like put your name in there a few places, and you'll have a crisis plan. That's, it's really all it takes.
WWW dot on the mark media dot com, mark with a C.
Anyway, so surviving a crisis is all about having a plan. If you ha, A, you should have a plan ahead of time, because if you're in the middle of a crisis, you're scrambling, the news media is calling you. And then you're like, you know, you're caught with your pants down. You're probably, your response.
That was Jeffrey Toobin.
Sorry, that was probably a bad pun. But anyway, you are, you are less prepared, and your response to the crisis is not going to be top notch. And most likely, you're going to suffer bigger consequences without a plan. So you should always have a crisis plan.
All right, so here's the thing, with all these crises, um, you know, in this day and age of, and we're not done talking about this because obviously Kathy has a lot more to say. But, you know, there's day two, there's day three, there's day four. People's attention span, you know, the, the, the news cycle moves so much more rapidly than it used to. And people get distracted and they go elsewhere. And they forget. And, you know, this was Trump's great win. Trump always won day two, day three, day four. He took the income, he, you know, he rope-a-doped it and took the barrage the first couple of days.
No, 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 okay.
And then he came back at them.
No, I have a different reason why Trump scandals, why he survived all scandals.
Because he won day, day three, day four, day five.
I disagree.
I know, we've done this before.
I did, I'm, I'm.
We're disagreeing?
We're disagreeing. A shocker. The reason why he survived all his scandals is because there was not one scandal a year, not one a month, not, there was 12 a day. When you have 12 a day, the attention span, you can survive them. You just have to keep like making bigger scandals, which he was perfect. But let's not talk about him.
But, okay, so my point, but people forget.
Bottom line is.
Who wants to get a new bo, school board?
Bottom line is, I don't think, oh, well, first of all, okay, so this is the other thing they did. In the conversation, they were talking about, how do we handle like complaints? I know, well, this other company did, you know what they did? They just let, let people only record three minutes. You know, and so at, at three minutes, like, they were, they were done, like, so, so when you get complaints to us, we only have to listen to three minutes of it, basically, in a nutshell. But which was a fine, that's a fine process to have.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's fine. But they should have, like, said, if people have three minutes versus unlimited time, they'll be very succinct. And they'll explain their crisis very succinctly, so then we could answer the crisis or their concern or problem faster. Rather than if they send us like a, a 10-page memorandum.
So what, what did they do wrong? I don't, I'm missing this point here.
No, I'm just saying that even that, even that part of the conversation, they could have handled that better.
They should have taken, taken the flag, taken the incoming and, and said, we made a mistake, we're learning from it. It's a great, it's a teachable, it's a teachable moment.
It's a teachable moment not to, no, it's a teachable moment for Zoom.
Who hasn't, yeah, who hasn't hit reply all when they just meant to reply? Who hasn't done something dumb like that?
Or, or worse.
Pick anybody, you know, they didn't say anybody, person, they didn't name names, I mean.
They were fine. They were fine. They could have survived the scandal, I think.
There were protests, and there were people out there within the, yeah, there were.
You know what? They didn't want to, no, 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 no. They didn't want to be on the school board. This was a good excuse.
Probably.
That's it, because if they really wanted to be on there, they could have survived. It was probably, they're just like, they were just taking too much hit. I mean.
That all said.
They were just calling their.
Moment they realized, if you haven't watched this video, just Google it and watch the moment.
Google, like, what's the name of the, the, uh, the Oakley Union Elementary School District Board?
Just put in school board, Zoom, resign. I mean, you know, just need a few terms. Um, but the moment that they realized it was open, and the look on their faces, that was not a good look. That was, we've all had that moment.
Well, they probably thought that they said even worse things, because what, I didn't think it was that bad.
It's the moment where you go, where, where everything gets fuzzy and the world starts to spin a little bit, and you kind of, oh, oh, shit. We're really screwed right now. Maybe not. Did I say anything? I mean, it's everything's in slow motion.
If I was on the school board, people would just know me well enough to know that I would be saying inappropriate things on the mic, in the, on the, in the mic, on the mic, off the mic, all, all times. They would just know my personality. Not inappropriate, but like, I would tell, if I thought parents were being ridiculous, I would just say that.
Are you, because you're in a mood?
No, because, um.
Not that you're ever in a mood. God forbid I would ever say anything sexist like that.
Are you saying I'm in a mood? Next thing, you're gonna say I'm menopausal or something. Um.
I gotta go. Look at the time. I gotta get to my hosting gig.
No, I'm just saying that, you know, this, this one, they could have survived, but it would have been nice. Everybody needs a plan. Have a plan ahead of time, but even if you don't have a plan, there's ways to get out of it without quitting your job, most of the time. Um, but anyway, all right, let's go to the last one. Are we on number four?
We're on number four.
Okay.
I don't have much to say about this one. I have a little of this. Yeah, yeah, I don't think they screwed. I thought they did, they did okay. I'll tell you one thing I would have done. Go ahead, talk about it.
All right, so anyway, um, if that wasn't enough drama for the week, just after takeoff, United Airlines Flight 328, the plane engine explodes midair. Now, me, if anybody knows me, they know I'm a freak on the plane. I have to be medicated to get on there.
You would be asleep. And I'd be, I'd be, huh, wake up and you.
No, I would be on my.
I think you're.
Overdosing.
Pharmaceutically.
No, I would be overdosing. No, I would be overdosing on more. I would be dead by the time the plane crashed because I would have overdosed on more anxiety medicine.
Yes.
I would have been like mainstreaming it, sniffing it. I don't even know. I, I'm a freak, um, when it comes to flying, so this would have freaked me out. Matter of fact, I'm never flying again. But anyway, people on the flight from Denver to Honolulu looked out their windows to find, oh, my God, an exposed engine spewing flames. The pilots issued a mayday call, and after turning back to the airport, they landed the Boeing 777, 2000 plane safely. So, hey, the, you know, in a way, this is good news. Um, it's like, uh, the Sully, Captain Sully. I mean, talk about heroes, right?
That's what, that's what, that's the only thing I, I don't understand why they didn't do that. Why don't they bring, those two pilots are heroes. They, they're, you know.
Do you think they will? I think they will. But maybe they don't want to. Maybe they don't want to be a sully.
Want to, because they don't, you know, you don't want to take a victory lap when you don't know what else is wrong with the planes. They're grounding a bunch of these planes with these engines.
Right, but.
You know, they don't want, they don't want to be.
This is my question, so.
But, nobody's gonna give a shit.
All right, all right, let's.
Things happen with planes, unfortunately.
What? What? Oh, shit happens with planes? Are you kidding me?
That's why, that's why they give you parachutes, right? Aren't there parachutes under your plane?
Oh, my God. Uh, uh, this is not a crisis because shit happens with planes. Sometimes they just go down. What? No.
No, I'm saying.
That was, okay.
That they should have taken a victory lap with the two pilots and said, look at what great shape we are in.
I think you need.
Even when there is a, 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 a giant malfunction.
Okay, you need a spokesperson. I, I, and I will not represent you. So anyway.
I'm calling Ted Cruz now. Hello, Ted, can you represent me?
FAA records later, records, sorry, later indicated that the plane was 26 years old. Boeing has now grounded all of the flights with the same engine as the one that exploded, um, and they've done it worldwide in the wake of this emergency. And the FAA has also issued an emergency order earlier, saying that it would be stepping up inspections on Boeing 777 airplanes equipped with certain, that type of engine, right? So United swiftly made social media updates about the event. They switched everyone's, uh, flight to wanted and provided, um, who wanted to travel. I don't know. Do you want to travel after you nearly?
Yeah, I would, I would have gotten right on the next flight. Not gonna happen again.
Oh, you would have said, no, okay, not only am I going, but I have flights for life.
I have this passed out person with me. I'm dragging, like, weekend at Bernie's. Can we just give her a seat on the plane? She has no idea what just happened.
Mainstream me with a lot of drugs to get back on a plane. But anyway, so they, you know, they made everybody happy by either switching everyone's flight or providing hotel accommodations for those who didn't want to fly immediately after because they were talking to the therapist. Um, or getting more drugs before they got back on. Um, so, but, so United, you know, did some, some tweeting and some outward communication. The only tweet Boeing made about the issue continued, um, they, they basically continued to post, um, regular content for two days afterwards. Um, so.
There, my point. People forget. People, you know, people aren't paying attention. When I said shit happens with planes, I don't, I don't mean it's like all the time, but there, there's a, okay, a tire blew, okay, on landing. I mean, things happen. It's mechanical. Um, you know, you don't want it to happen on your flight, you don't, but they're trained to make sure that these things, they have redundancies. There's very little happens.
So who's, who, does anybody, who takes the, the PR hit? Nobody? Does United? Does Boeing?
Why do you have to have a PR hit?
I mean, if, because it's, it's still a public relations crisis. I mean, you don't want to have a burning engine or be like Southwest and suck a passenger out the air. I mean, that, that's not a good thing.
No, that, that was a terrible try. That was a Baltimore woman, yeah.
Yeah, it's awful. I mean, you, you don't, you don't want to be associated. Some people may be like, I don't want to fly United. And maybe it has nothing to do with United because the, the plane was 27 years old, I think. But that's within the timeframe that it's okay. I think, I think they're allowed, I don't know, I think they'd stay in service for like 30 years or something. But does Boeing take any? Did they, I don't know if they take, uh, they, Boeing obviously didn't seem to be that concerned.
Boeing knows what the hell they're doing. I mean, well, I mean, they, they had a lot of problems with the rolling out of the, what was the latest flight? The latest plane that they have so much problems with?
I don't know. I forget the number. It's like.
I thought it was 777, so I'm confused.
No, it's like the 745s or something. I don't know, I don't know. There's another number. It's not 777. But anyway, um, but it, yeah, so on average, an aircraft is, you know, it could be, could be operating for 30 years. So technically.
As long as their stock held steady and, which I'm assuming it did. I'm not, I haven't checked.
Well, anyway, United handled it, I think, the right way with the social media responses, with the, um, the way they handled their passengers. I'm sure that, that, I mean, who knows? There'll probably be lawsuits or something. I have no idea. But, but, you know.
You know, you know what they, what they didn't do? Well, what did they offer the, so what did they offer their passengers?
Well, they, um, they switched everyone's flight who wanted to go. And they provided hotel accommodations for those who did not want to fly immediately. I don't know, they probably paid for people's flights, wouldn't you think?
No, they, they usually, that's where they usually take a hit, where they, where they stiff the passenger. They've just had this horrible thing happen.
Wait a minute, you almost died? And you're not gonna give me a free flight?
Yeah, they, you know, they should give free flights. They should give something like a round trip. What's it gonna hurt them? They got middle aisle seats open anyway. Nobody's lying.
We could be wrong on that because I would think they would do it. I mean, if I complained at Chipotle, they'd give me my meal for free. If I almost die in a plane crash, I'm thinking United's gonna.
Nobody almost died. They had good pilots who they should take out on tour and parade around and have them.
But, 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 some more tips, they use social media the right way. They were on top of it. And then what I would do if I were United is what you said, you know, um, eventually, you know, these pilots are heroes and saved a lot of lives. And to be honest, they should be getting credit for, um, I don't know who they are, but.
That's the thing. You don't know who they.
It can't be easy to fly an engine. I don't know.
Had a movie, got a CBS gig, CBS News gig. These guys, these guys are hero. These guys are, I mean, amazing what they did.
So my bottom line takeaways of all these crises is that honestly, you can survive a crisis, but you need to plan. And it's always good to plan ahead.
And if you plan ahead, and even if you don't plan ahead, okay, and you're stuck in a, step back, figure out the best moves, don't lie.
Never lie.
Figure it out.
And don't go and be.
Don't wing it.
Don't wing it and never go.
On United, don't wing it. But don't wing it. Don't, put down a plan, think it through, talk to your friends, talk to your family, talk to your cohorts, talk to your.
No, no.
And then call us.
No, don't talk to any of those people. Sit back, get your team, get your lawyer, your PR crisis person.
Get your team.
Get a team together.
You have better words than me. I don't have good words.
Ask your grandma what she says. Take her advice, you know?
Yes. Get your team together, as Kathy said so. Yes. Get your team together, as Kathy said so wisely.
And from now on, I will be Mark's, uh, spokesperson.
Yes. She's gonna be doing the show on her own from now on.
He's no longer allowed to talk.
Off the mark is a presentation of On The Mark Media. Please contact us at On The Mark Media on Twitter. Hold on, let me get the music going.
I know, I need to jam out here.
And off the mark, at onthemarkmedia.com. If you're gonna write us, off the mark at onthemarkmedia.com. Those are both marks with a C. We'd be delighted to hear from you.
Only if you have good things to say.
Or if you're Ted Cruz and you have a lot of money.
No, no.
I take you as a client.
We have morals. No.
Until next time, you're who?
I'm Kathy.
And I'm Mark. We're the Bickersteins, Steins.